Morning, everyone. I'm gonna, just before I call the meeting to order, I'll wish everybody a hap- happy April Fool's Day. And we are missing two councillors today. Michelle and Dan are at a seniors housing convention in Edmonton. And I don't know about the rest of you, but that's pretty scary for me if Dan is looking after what might be my future housing, so.
I will find out.
I will cross my fingers. Okay. First thing on the item, agenda, or sorry, well, pass the agenda. Is there any addition solutions? If not, I would like a motion to approve.
Through the chair, just to the in-camera session, a closed session, CAO update under FOIP section, intergovernmental relations.
Okay, Shane's moving the agenda as amended. Vote. Okay, we'll move into the public hearing, and Dustin has made a motion to open the public hearing. I think we got a vote on that, don't we? Yeah, okay. That's, no, we'll do the public hearing then. Oh, sorry, you're right. Dustin, we missed one. We gotta go back to number three, under adoption of the minutes.
Well, that's what I moved.
Oh, I thought she's opening the public hearing. I was reading the wrong thing, I'm sorry, right off the bat.
It could be screwed. They have it all moved out, but I don't care.
Yeah, I'm sure he said public hearing.
Either way, I believe there's one.
Okay.
Deputy Revoster, I believe that where there's a motion on the floor to approve the minutes from the March 4th meeting.
Okay. Any errors or omissions in those minutes, or are we good? Nope, everybody's good? Vote. Now we're in the public hearing? Nope.
Now we need a motion.
Okay, Blaine's making the motion to go into public hearing. Vote. And Kayleen, you have the floor.
Good morning, council, and thank you through the chair. I am here this morning to present a public hearing report to request for the removal of a municipal reserve designation in the hamlet of Suffield. The request comes from Cypress County Administration for the removal of municipal reserve dedication on a vacant parcel owned by Cypress County. The parcel is located at 152 Ronald Avenue in the hamlet of Suffield. The parcel is considered vacant and has been leased to a third party since May 2022 for storage purposes. Under the land use bylaw, the parcel is owned Public Services District, of which the purpose and intent of the district is to accommodate institutional, educational, and recreational uses that support the public needs of residents and businesses. The consideration of removal of the designation does not change the land use classification. As shown on the adjacent land use districts map, if you don't mind pulling that up, thank you, Les Leanne, the lands directly to the north are outside of the hamlet boundary and are considered agriculture. To the west and south are developed hamlet residential properties, and to the east, there is a hamlet industrial site. This parcel has been deemed most favorable by Cypress County Administration to locate the new Suffield Water Treatment Plant. A site analysis concluded a total of nine sites for consideration. The other eight sites were not considered favorable due to technical constraints surrounding elevations and ability to service with gravity sewer, the size and shape of the lots not being conducive to the use and consideration of distances from the incoming water supply line. The proposed parcel has advantages due to convenient access from Ronald Avenue and proximity and ability to connect to both the new water supply line from Ralston and the existing gravity sewer system. The development of the new municipal utility infrastructure on this site is proposed in a manner that supports the continued mixed public uses, including open space and recreation uses on the north of the site should it be desired in the future. The surrounding lands are designated hamlet residential to the west and south as mentioned, and industrial to the east. If removal of MRs to be directed by motion of council, a development permit will be required prior to construction, and the parcel is located within the boundary of the Suffield Area Structure Plan. Section 671 Use of Reserve Land under the Municipal Government Act states that a municipality may use reserve for the following purposes: For the use of a public park, a public recreation area, or school board purposes. Section 65, 675, one rather, Removal of Designation states that after taking into consideration representations made at a public hearing, a council may direct a designated officer to notify the register at Alberta land titles that the request for provision of a public hearing has been met and to remove the designation of reserve. The South Saskatchewan Regional Plan states that municipalities are responsible for planning and development processes, ensuring land is available for development, such as water and wastewater treatment facilities to accommodate population growth. Under Section 4.4.11 of the Municipal Development Plan, it states that the council will prioritize as part of its asset management plan and annual capital budget process opportunities to maintain and replace municipal water, wastewater, and stormwater infrastructure as needed. Furthermore, under Section 9, the county shall adhere to county policies, agreements, and local school boards, and requirements of the MGA for acquisition, deferral, and disposition of municipal reserve land. In the Suffield Area Structure Plan, this parcel is deemed suitable as open space and provides a buffer between residential and industrial uses. Under the Public Services District of the land use bylaw, public utilities and uses minor are permitted use, and at the time of writing the report, no comments were received from adjacent landowners nor from Prairie Row School Division. We did circulate the application, sorry, the request, rather, to Alberta Transportation and Economic Corridors, and they've indicated they have no concerns with the removal of MR as requested. That concludes my public hearing presentation through the chair.
Okay, is quick, anybody, any councillors have questions of clarification for administration?
No.
Keith?
Yeah, just, you had said it was leased temporarily to somebody, obviously that will be terminated and the site will be cleared.
Through the chair, that is correct. Our finance team did work with the leasing of the land, and that those steps have been taken as per the lease agreement.
Any other questions? Okay, we're not seeing anybody in the audience that would wanna do a presentation either in favor or against this proposal, so I'm just gonna move on from there. I think that pretty well wraps it up. Are nobody speaking for or against it, so?
Deputy Revoster, we need to go through the, through the process for it.
Okay. All right. We have an order, I already missed the first part, but about stating my name and I'm the chair. Okay, is there, I will now call for any presentations from anyone in support of the proposal. I have to do that three times. I will now call for any presentations from anyone in support of the proposal. I will now call for any presentations from anyone in support of the proposal. And council, again, is there any questions of clarification? To the presenter, which is, we don't have any. Okay, those in opposition, I will now call for any presentations from anyone in opposition of the proposal. Second time, I will now call for any presentations from anyone in opposition of the proposal. And the third time, I will now call for any presentations from anyone in opposition of the proposal.
Can you repeat that?
No. I will now call for any final submissions from those who feel that they have not had the opportunity to fully participate in the public hearing. And we had no one make any presentations, so I don't, we don't have to, well, I will ask, do the persons who have made presentations feel that you have had a fair hearing, that doesn't apply. Okay, now I will then conclude the hearing, the public hearing is concluded, and no further submissions will be accepted. And I need somebody to make the motion to close the public hearing. We have Lloyd down at the end there, Lloyd's making the motion. All in, vote, please. Thank you, we will now move on to, we have no delegations, so we can take that off the list, there's no new notices of motion, we'll take that off the list. Les Leanne's my guide here, if I miss something, she's gonna let me know. We're at 7.1, removal of municipal reserve designation. Kayleen or Joe, I'm not sure, Kayleen, okay, please.
Thank you, through the chair. This pertains to a request for removal of municipal reserve designation in the hamlet of Suffield, the public hearing just concluded. The recommended motion is that council direct the chief administrative officer, being a designated officer of Cypress County, to notify the register of Alberta land titles that the provisions of the Municipal Government Act have been complied with, and to remove the designation of municipal reserve from 130, 152, rather, Ronald Avenue in the hamlet of Suffield.
Thank you, Kayleen, Dustin is moving that motion. Any questions? We're all good? Vote. That is carried. Thank you, Kayleen.
Good job again.
We're gonna move on to 7.2 is the annual ASB report. I see Lisa's here. Chair's yours.
Good morning, thank you through the chair. We have Lisa Saltz, our agricultural supervisor, here to present the 2024 Agricultural Services Board Report. Take it away, Lisa.
Thanks, good morning, and through the chair, this is our summary from 2024. Yeah, I'll probably forget to do that, so. The egg service boards are responsible for administering and enforcing the Agricultural Service Board Act, the Egg Pest Act, the Soil Conservation Act, and the Weed Control Act, as well as supporting the Animal Health Act. Cypress County's ASB also strives to provide the great payers of the county with proactive agricultural and environmental services and programs not generally available anywhere else. As part of the ASB grant application process, we must develop a five-year strategic business plan outlining the goals and objectives for upcoming years. The plan provides staff with a document to establish priorities and activities to assist in the execution of programs and services. 2024 was the last year in that grant cycle, and that included legislative, resource management, and rack control streams of funding. And the new grant application for the next five-year cycle was submitted on January 30th. So our goal to enforce the Agricultural Service Board Act, we presented this summary in April last year, and there were no extreme cases of land infested with weeds or pests that it needed to be taken under supervision or in order of recommendation. So some grants that we got last year, the legislative activities, we had just over 166,000, resource management had 20,000, and the rack, rack control was 13,000, and we had an $8,000 grant from Alberta Environment and Protected Areas for biocontrol on Bedin Shore along the South Saskatchewan River and, and creeks at times when we used them there. And then we had $78 from Clean Farms for recycling grain bags and twine. So the provincial ASB program conducts field visits annually to ensure that the grant funding is appropriately spent in support ASB program objectives. So Alberta Ag and Irrigation staff visited 15 municipalities last year, and we were one of them. So the field visit took place on July 29th, and Alberta Ag staff met with the egg service board and, and our staff in the morning, and we reviewed grant program requirements, and then we toured the chem shed area and looked at our rental equipment, and then the afternoon was spent touring various locations throughout the county to demonstrate successes and challenges. I'm not gonna read all of this, just some highlights from the staff that they observed that the, the egg services team here is, is doing a good job with the governance between the ASB and council, so they're very pleased with that. And under the legislative activities, policies and programs for weed and egg pests is supported and effectively, you know, being out there for producers and, and that sort of thing. And the resource management program is robust and effective, and rack control is supporting compliance as well. So it was, we had very good comments from, from that field visit, so it was encouraging. To enforce the Soil Conservation Act, we had two soil conservation officers appointed. We didn't have any serious issues with soil erosion that were identified, and the two seed drills were rented to 37 producers who seeded 2,201 acres, and seven producers rented the land rollers in total, and, and they rolled 383 acres. So to enforce the Weed Control Act, we had seven seasonal staff and two full-time employees appointed as weed inspectors. We inspected one permanent seed cleaning plant and four mobiles in the county. We inspected and destroyed prohibited noxious weeds at 103 known sites and 10 new sites. We inspected and controlled noxious weeds at 180 known sites and 14 new sites. Many hours were spent hand digging and, and, or hand pulling and digging regulated weeds and other invasive weeds as well. Weed inspectors mapped most locations of regulated weeds, and the mapping just enables staff to evaluate the success and control efforts more effectively. About 819 kilometers of road were inspected, and approximately 148 hectares required weed control, and that was the Hilda, Schuler, Beaumont, and urban areas this year. So the county is broken into three portions to get all that covered every three years. So the next slide is a slide of all the spray data that we collected in units that have that capability, and the next two slides, they're just blown up a little bit, so it might be easier for you to read. And then the next one is, is data from the weed inspector, so they take their tablets in, and they're trained up with the software and that sort of thing, so this is what they are capturing, so lots of these would be new sites, that sort of thing, things that we would have to go back to, but clearly we're not out actively mapping things that we're gonna go and spray with a spray truck and that sort of thing, because we can track that as we spray, so. And then there's a bunch of photos here of some of the regulated weeds that we are dealing with, so field bindweed at the top, that one is prolific, it's kind of everywhere, it's in the ditches, it's in pastures, it's, yeah, it's tending to be more and more, it seems like. Stantless chamomile is in certain areas, it's easy to control if, if we know about it and, you know, get there and that sort of thing. Black henbane, we're finding more of that, that was very sporadic, just, you know, one or two plants here and there. Last year, we found quite a bit more, so we're keeping our eyes out for that one. And of course, baby's breath, that's a nice, big, healthy plant. And of course, Baby's Breath, that's a nice, big, healthy plant there that they dug out and about a foot down. So with any luck, that wouldn't regrow, but by the looks of the photo right beside it, it probably will in a few years' time. There's enough energy stored down there that it's gonna start growing again, so. And these are a few more. So Knodding Thistle, that's a prohibited noxious weed. There's a few patches of that in the county. The Napp weeds, there's three of them there. There's Russian Napp weed, Spotted Napp weed, and Diffuse Napp weed. So we deal with all three of those. Russian is probably the biggest one, I suppose. Those are tricky to deal with, but we try. They're prohibited noxious, so we have to eradicate them. Toad Flaxes, we got a couple different toad flaxes in the county. Burdocks, Horry Cress, Houndstown. These ones aren't as common, but still certainly on our radar. Common Tansy along the river and Japanese Brom. So Biocontrol, this is our mention of leafy spurge. We had 20 sites that we put beetles on this year, all along the South Saskatchewan River. So 20 sites is a lot. So that $8,000 from Alberta Environment and Parks helps a lot. That covers about nine. And then we also have an agreement with them in another way. They're kind of trying to start their own program, so we get an additional five to put on Bedin Shore as well, that we don't have to pay for. So that's been very good. And yeah, this is one of the sites where we probably put three releases. And yeah, it's, you know, it takes a long time for them to do their thing. And we've realized over the last number of years that you have to put multiple releases to make an impact. So that's what we've been going with the last couple of years. So Downy Brom, this is a noxious weed as well. We spent a lot of time spraying Downy Brom along the County Rites Way last year. We used a pre-emergent herbicide that stops the growth of germinated seed. So you don't see immediate effects, but we hope to see good results this year, because that seed shouldn't germinate and do very much, so. With that, though, if it... if that area is disturbed that we sprayed, then that barrier is broken. So the seed will grow through that if grader's go over it or a huge amount of cattle or something like that, so. Not that they should be moved on the county roads, right? And approximately 175 miles of road were inspected and sprayed, so. So weeds of concern, those are not regulated, but they've shown to be invasive in the county. So there's a few patches of this German status. I've shown you this last year, maybe two. So we're just continuing to work with landowner there and get that under control. And yeah, cam there has got a root that is over two feet long there. So it was effective to be digging after the moisture last year. They got some nice specimens there. And these were some more that were brought to our attention last year. Rush Skeleton Plant, that's a native species. Broom Snake Weed, that's native, but it's poisonous, so that's, you know, a bit concerning. Curl Dock is non-native. It's kind of widespread, though. You would see that often in low-lying areas where there's a bit more moisture, that sort of thing. Shoyu Milkweed is native. We often get calls for this, because people just don't like the look of it, and it will gum up a swath or that sort of thing if it's cut, because it is milky in there. And Desert Alyssum is non-native, and that is being very invasive in the county as well. So we're having lots of reports of that. So and because they're not regulated, there's often no known controls for them. So we try and help people out as much as we can, but. Thank you. To enforce the Agricultural Pest Act, we had seven seasonal staff and two full-time employees appointed as weed inspectors. Four canola fields were inspected for club roots, Black Legged Sclerotinia. 12 wheat fields were surveyed for Fusarium, 94 sites for grasshoppers, 255 sites in Range One for rats. In the rat control zone, we're done twice. And we participated in the provincial Dutch Elm Disease survey with seven traps. The Diamondback Army... no, the Diamondback Moth Survey with four traps, and Bertha Army Worm with four traps. And the Bram Bait applicator was used by two producers to control grasshoppers. And these are just some examples of the traps. So the first one is the Dutch Elm Disease. Those get put up on posts that would be kind of along Highway One in the hamlets and down at the border in one floor, that sort of thing. So to catch any potential beetles that would come in with traffic from the States or Saskatchewan. And Bertha Army Worm and Diamondback, those are both on canola fields. Rat Control, so spring and fall rat inspections at approximately 255 sites were completed, and there were no signs of rats. We did have three calls with potential rat sightings in the county, though, so not related to the rat control zone. Upon inspection, we found a pocket gopher, which is very common, and bats in one spot. And then the third one was the silage pit. So that was a huge concern. That one came in early January. They had lifted up plastic and saw something scatter. And so we got a call right away, which was excellent. And we put out, I don't know, 15 or so bait boxes. And then the province asked us to put more out. It was in close proximity to the landfill, the city landfill. So with the history with that, with rats in 2012 and 2014, they took every precaution. So we were even told that we needed to do our eight-mile radius and let all the producers and residents know that there was a potential rat sighting. I think it might have been a little bit overboard until we could actually confirm rats. But anyway, that's what we were directed, so that's what we did. And we monitored this for months, months and months. We'd go, you know, every few days and that sort of thing, and we never did find signs of rats, so that was a relief. So to enforce the Animal Health Act, there were no reportable animal health issues identified. And we promote various topics in the ASB newsletter and on the website. And the RFID tag reader was used by two producers and one 4-H Club last year, and they read 225 head of cattle. So this is a list of equipment that is not readily available and kind of just specialty. So I don't think I need to go through each one, but it just gives an idea of how often they were used last year. And this is just a graphic that we've used in newsletters, and some of the pictures have been on social media and made into videos that have also been on social media, too. So those have been a bit of usage from producers that way, too. To provide ratepayers with relevant and modern information, so we hosted a number of events last year. The Working World Workshop, we had 15 people attend. We had a drone school. There was 15 people there. Farm Succession Workshop with the County Forty Mile and the Milk River Watershed Council, that was very successful. We had 24 people. Green Acres Workshop, we had 20 people. And the Septic Sense Workshop, there was 10. And we hosted an EFP workshop in December, and we had nine people at that. We published two ASB newsletters. We awarded two students with bursaries. And we supported the 4-H District, the Southern Alberta Women's Grazing School, the Beef Pen Show, Youth Range Days, and a connection conference. And these are examples of our newsletters, so I realize they're very small and you'll never be able to read them, but. Okay. And this one is for the awareness and understanding of agriculture practices with the local watersheds kind of thing here. So staff can participate in their projects and meetings and workshops with SEWA and Milk River Watershed Council when we can. We try to, you know, help them and advertise and that sort of thing, too. And we partnered up with SEWA for the Green Acres Workshop. And Milk River's always got great events and activities going on, so we promote those for them. And then, supporting the Environmental Farm Plans and Sustainable Agriculture... or no, Sustainable Canadian Agricultural Partnership Programs. We had six producers complete their EFPs last year, and they were approved. Eight others had registered but didn't finish, although some have finished now in 2025. The EFP and SCAP were promoted in the newsletters and on social media. And there is a spot on the website, too, that we have for that. And we just generally act as a point of contact for anyone looking for information. And then, of course, we hosted the workshop in December, where nine people attended. Egg Classic Recycling, so Hilda Transfer Site is the official Clean Farms grain bag and twine recycling site in the county. We had sent 10 rolled-up grain bags for recycling. And twine bags are available at the transfer sites in the county office for producers interested in recycling twine. And we had 44 bags recycled last year. And Clean Farms had moved the chemical jug collection site from municipal to retail collection over the last three years. So the urban site was closed December 2022, and Range Road 63 site was closed last year in October. So Shuler is the one remaining site that we do have, just because of its proximity, you know, from out of town, I guess. And the fear was that producers would just be throwing their jugs in the transfer site, so. And all those jugs must be bagged going forward to be dropped off, and those bags are available at the transfer site or the county office here, so. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Lisa. There was a lot of good information in there. I appreciate it. Is there anybody with any questions for Lisa? I have a couple. The rat patrol stuff, does Saskatchewan work with us at all, or are we on our own on that one?
Not with us. They do have a program, so they are working their program, too. But yeah, we haven't needed to work together. We did offer several years ago when there was somebody just on the Saskatchewan side who had a rat that was confirmed. And we reached out, we sent a letter, and there was never a reply there. We just offered our services to, you know, help with inspections and stuff like that, but.
Okay. I just was wondering what you'd do if there's... the farmyard is right along the border. Is Saskatchewan stepping up, or they just give you permission if you had to go into that?
And often, if it's something like that, we would go anyway. We're not gonna go, you know, two or three miles in. But if it's very close and it makes sense for us to just do a quick inspection since we're there, we've done that. The program has always been supportive of that, so.
Okay. The other question is, I think, well, actually, there's two. Gary Lentz was always concerned about Fusarium. Did you find any? Or do we have a problem with that?
I don't have a report back yet. It's been taken off the list, though, like the act. But the province does still prefer to test for it, because, I mean, it's out there. It's a thing. I do think we have a small amount here.
I think Gary was quite upset about that when it was taken off the list. He always felt that that was gonna bite us down the road. The other thing was, a few years ago, there was some of the councillors were concerned about... There was... we weren't spraying soon enough. Your staff didn't come on board till whenever it was in May or June. Was it Downy Brom that they wanted us to see, to hire a contractor and get out there earlier in the spring and catch it? Or what was that type of weed? Dustin is saying yes, yeah. Are we doing anything like that?
No. We, the last year or two, like, we've set up our trucks a bit differently. Like, we put extra nozzles and cam pods and stuff on there to target Downy Brom. So that's why we spent a lot of time last year doing it. And until we can get a process that, too, like, there's no way we could cover all the areas that need to be done in a season. And like you say, because it's not early enough. But yeah, so now when we can start spraying like last year and have that information and data tracked, then we'll be able to use that going forward. And hopefully, the plan is that if that barrier is not disturbed, it should be good for three to five years. So fingers crossed. Yeah, so that's kind of our plan, other than hiring a contractor, I guess, so.
Sounds good. If we get asked, at least we have an answer. Shane?
Yeah, Richard, if you get asked, I mean, we could spend our whole budget on spraying for Downy Brom. And if the grader comes by and touches, you know, there is this... And the problem was, too, we... there wasn't no... for a while, there wasn't no chemical that was really controlling it. Otherwise, unless you totally wiped everything out. So then you were right back to dirt.
Yeah, good to know.
And then it was... then you had to deal with erosion on the side of the roads. And so it was a tough thing, but Downy Brom is a problem throughout, even in the city and everywhere. And it's... but to get the right chemicals, that they're working on it. And I know Lisa and her staff are monitoring now and got where they sprayed and see how it's responding, because there is one chemical that you are using now.
Esplanade, yeah.
Okay. Go ahead.
Well, maybe add to that, because I think in the past, the protocol was to pick it by hand, which was a fairly time-consuming and labor-intensive job. So I think now that we have a viable spray, or hopefully that we have a viable spray to control it, and as you're monitoring it, that might be able to help us going forward.
Anybody else? Are we still on our own for gophers, for gopher control? Like, is that... do you think it's gonna change?
Strick Nine won't come back for a very long time if it ever does. There's other options out there that they're just not as effective, but they're out there. And that's part of the reason why Strick Nine won't come back, because there are other options.
So if our ratepayers have a problem with gophers, they can come in and talk to you, and you do have some ideas for them?
They can... yeah, they can certainly come here. I don't have anything here that I can sell or give them. But like, ag retailers would probably have what they're looking for. But yeah, I can point them in the right direction or whatever, so.
Pardon me? What was that? Okay, well, if there's no more questions, thank you very much for the report. It was much appreciated. Okay, Shane's made a motion that we... pardon me?
Shane made the motion?
Shane made the motion to accept the report as presented. Oh, yeah, he comes in handy sometimes. Vote. That's carried. Okay, number eight... or pardon me, 7.3 is Chamber of Commerce sponsorship request. Joe is taking that? All by his own.
Thank you. And through the chair, we received a request from the Southeast Alberta Chamber of Commerce to sponsor their annual general meeting, which is a provincial meeting this year. So the Alberta Chamber of Commerce is being hosted here. The dates are May 29th to the 31st. Administration is recommending sponsorship of $1,000 for the 87th Annual Alberta Chamber of Commerce General Meeting and plenary session to be funded from our contributions to private organizations. And the reason this is coming to council is because the event is mostly happening within the city and not within the county, so require approval from council for any sponsorship.
Robin, would you like to make the motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve as amended. The question that I have, Joe, is often they have different levels of sponsorship. What are the levels of sponsor? There, yeah. I would honestly, we want to be leaders in our area, and this is a provincial event that's being held down here. I'm open to something more if there's a higher level of sponsorship that could potentially be available. So we're being asked for bronze level, is that accurate right now?
That's correct.
Leslie Ann, if you scroll down just a little bit and just go to the left. Up a little bit. Saw it there. Silver was 5,500. And gold is 75K. Like, even if we did, like, the Friday, like, I'm cool with the bronze, but maybe we do the bronze and the Friday breakfast. I don't know, I would be up for upwards of that $5,000 mark. Curious on what the thoughts of council are on this.
I would rather sponsor, like, a breakfast instead of giving them just cash, because that way we are ag and feeding the world, so we can be feeding the people at the convention.
So you'd be looking at the $3,500 one, we got a Friday breakfast, we got a lunch, it's also the same price, same cost. Start down the far end. Keith, any thoughts?
Yeah, I think lunch would be a good thing. Probably a lot of people want to do breakfast, but I think lunch gives you more coverage.
Dustin?
I'm certainly okay with that.
Dustin?
Fine with either.
Either breakfast or lunch? Blaine?
Yeah, I agree. I'd go either breakfast or lunch. I think the chamber does a lot of good in the community, and, you know, they support our ag function as well, and I would be good with that. I guess my question would be is, where does the money come from to do that?
Sorry, and through the chair, the $3,500 we could absorb, our current budget is $4,000, but that would essentially use up all of our sponsorship budget for the year. So if we did get any other requests in further on, we might be looking at a budget amendment from council for that. Also wanted to bring to your attention, we're still also tentatively working with the chamber on a tour, so looking to facilitate and/or host transportation out to county businesses. They are looking at two of our businesses within the county as a bit of a sightseeing endeavor for the group coming down. So there's potential that the city or the county could host that event or sponsor that event as well, because that's happening within the county, though. We don't necessarily require approval from council for that part of the activity. So we do have other ways to support the chamber.
And we let Lloyd go, and then Robin, you will have the floor?
Yeah, I like the idea of the lunch, if we're gonna do one. I think lunch is the better way to go.
You, Robin?
So, yeah, no, I will, so I'll amend my motion to approve the sponsorship, but more specifically for the lunch contribution. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
For council's awareness, through the chair, we've been asked for the transportation part of that to be $1,500. Just, again, Mr. Cartwright's correct, it's in the counties, so there's no specific approval required, but just to kind of flesh out the overall spending, we've been asked for another $1,500 for the bus transportation to two events taking place in the county.
Sure, go ahead, Blaine.
So then we'd be up to $5,000, then? Is that what we're saying? So we basically have to get an amendment to our budget, then, to afford to do that?
That would go over our allotted budget for what we have for sponsorships, correct? Or we could take it from someplace else?
Okay. Any thoughts? Yeah, Dustin.
There's that nice little account called Council Other. I like that one.
Al, do you know about that one? The Council Other?
I'm not intimately familiar with it. I have administrative other, so I'm not, wherever council would like it to come. I just wanted council to be aware that the total spending for that particular AGM would be in that $5,000 vicinity, so I didn't want it to be a surprise at a later date. We could certainly come back to council at the next council meeting with where exactly that money would be coming from. If council wanted to pick the number, we'd certainly either, we could come back on the 15th with where it's coming from.
I would prefer that. So that we can keep our budget in line.
Shane's good? Okay. Well, it says, chamber's 125th anniversary, so we should be good for another 125 years before we have to step up again.
Through the chair, they were looking for commitment by this afternoon.
Yeah, I think we need to do it today. Yes? Use your, yeah, your mic.
You know, there's also a very fine account called general revenue that we can, that, like, the account is fairly irrelevant, it's just where you're taking, it's not like you don't have the money, it's just a matter of the logistics of it, right, guys?
So we have a motion on the floor to talk about the first part of that, and where we find the money on the second part will come along. But Leslie Ann, please?
Yeah, that's a good point. So the motion is on the floor that Councilor Kirby White made for that. There's, we have it in the RFD where the funds are coming from, and then if the other one for the 1,500 for the transportation is outside of the budget area, we can bring it back or notify council if it's coming out of another.
Sure.
We just didn't have, there just wasn't enough time to put it in.
So Robin has a motion on the floor that he would like to go with the lunch part, and he would like to make sure, as Shane has reminded me, that beef will be served. Good with that, Robin? Okay, any other questions? Vote. Oh, okay, we do have pork producers, right? So some kind of meat. Thank you. Public Works Services, nothing to report, it doesn't look like. Corporate Services, we have Human Resources Management Policy. Al?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And to council, administration is seeking approval for the new Human Resources Management Policy, COU 12, to be approved. Cypress County is committed to fostering a positive and thriving workplace through effective human resource management. The proposed Human Resource Management Policy establishes clear guidelines to ensure fair, transparent, and consistent HR practices that align with the county's values, support strategic goals, and comply with legal responsibilities. The policy outlines principles such as equity and fairness, transparency, accountability, professional development, health, safety, and well-being. The policy will guide employment and recruitment, workplace conduct, employee development, health and safety, and employee relations with Cypress County. The approval of this policy will standardize HR management practices across the organization, provide clarity and consistency for employment and management, support a professional, inclusive, and respectful workplace culture, align the county's human resource framework with best practices and legal standards. There is no immediate financial impact, and any associated costs will be managed within existing budgets. There is no reference to municipal or federal legislation, and reference to the strategic plan is the policy supports Cypress County's strategic priorities by enhancing workplace culture, employee engagement, and organizational effectiveness. Our recommendation is that council approve the new Human Resource Management Policy as presented.
Thank you, Al. Would somebody like to make a motion? I'm looking at Lloyd. Are you good with that? Okay. Is there any questions for Al? Everybody's good with it? Okay, vote, please. Up with the pending council action items. Is there any questions for Al on this? Okay, I see none. We don't need a motion. Too late, Shane. Should I give him time? Okay, Shane. I'm just wondering who's the senior here now?
Oh.
Got your mic up, please?
Council Direct Administration complete comprehensive review of Cypress County dust control policies and bio on return at a recommendation by
Look at the status.
Status report will come to council committee April 7th. What's April 7th? Oh, you guys, I wasn't here for that, sorry. When you guys decided that.
Good question, yep. Okay, I don't think we need an answer. You got one?
No.
Okay, great. Okay, so we're just taking that for information and all of a sudden that's, I've run out of room here, okay? Chief Administration Officer, nothing, no report. Correspondence and information, that's just what we finished, just checking this off. We will now go into Reeve and councillor reports. I'll just save mine for the last, I guess. Lloyd, do you want to start out, please?
Sure. It's been busy out there in El Quater. First of all, the meetings. Fifth, I attended with the Reeve and Michelle and Blaine and CIO Dunmore stood in the wind for a while weight scales there for the Sheriff's Department.
Oh, right, yeah, at the weight scales, okay.
And then on the 7th, went to the Southfield Luncheon, which was good. I really enjoyed that. And then we had the MPC. And then on the 27th, went to HALO in the hat there, so it was good. One of the good things is, is the county, our fire chief asked me to get ahold of some of the grazing association presidents down south. And about putting some water tanks there for the where the biggest threat is for the fires down there anyways. They're putting one in in Sage. And it's going in and I believe, I'm not counting, but I think it's 600 barrels. Maybe joking. Does that sound right? Yeah. And also, there's a rancher down there who has volunteered to fill it. So it's a pilot project. My understanding is, and if it goes good and they have the budget, he's gonna put in two more different locations down there, so. It's really a good PR thing. I had lots of, a lot of good feedback about it. So Blaine helped me out there with getting ahold of these guys, so thank you. And one of the other things that's happening down in El Quater is they're doing a Fire Smart program. It's been going on for at least a couple of weeks now. Got lots, lots of emails and lots of phone calls. Some are very happy, not very many, some are upset about it. Just because they're cutting trees down, I guess. But they've asked for assistance from the county and I've told them that it's a park project. And we have nothing, we can't interfere. We have no jurisdiction or whatsoever to deal with any of it. So anyways, I just got two more again this morning, but yeah, that's what I've been telling them.
It's an Alberta provincial park and it's not in, it's not in our jurisdiction at all, so.
Just let everybody know, in case you get a call.
That's it, okay, Robin?
Had a couple of meetings with the ICM with regards to RIDP, I think Al will brief us a little bit on that within close as well. You know, continuing to have good conversations, a lot of conversations, and we'll hopefully have some updates here in the next two weeks.
Yeah. Also attended the Southfield Luncheon, really appreciate what they do, inviting us out there, having lunch with them and looking over their facility and they always have a really good lunch, it was great. Attended the Urban Ag Society meeting on the 17th of March. They're doing a lot of maintenance work down there, but they still continue to have concerns with the infrastructure, whether it's, you know, the the aging infrastructure, the ice plant itself, and then the arena boards and things, so it's something that I guess we'll continue to get on, keep on our docket and talk about as we go forward to see where we're at and how we can both between the society and ourselves, figure out who's gonna look after what. On the 19th of March, I went to Mason Exhibition and Stampede meeting. Main discussion there was allocation of the funds that they get from the province for the seven major ag societies. It's quite discerning that how they, how it gets split up. It seems that those that are highly in debt seem to get the lion's share of the money. So it's just kind of frustrating for the exhibition board, and I don't blame them for how they got dealt some of the money considering some of the other exhibitions, Last Bridge Camrose, such, got quite a bit of money and, yeah, they're quite broke. So that was interesting to find that information out. And other than that, that's all I have.
Is there anything we can do about that?
Well, yeah, I'm not sure if there's anything that the county can help with as far as how the province splits up this, this grant money that they're giving out. I guess it's up to the, I mean, we all know that the exhibition is planning a big project and maybe that'll, you know, at some time, help them in securing a little more money from the province, but I mean, I'll keep you updated as I go forward at the meetings.
Okay, thank you. Shane?
Yeah, I had Highway 3 meeting. They updated on the process, on the, how it's how the job is going so far between Tabor and Verdette. And they figure they'll have it open, their date still is end of '27. They will not, after you got a section done, they won't open that section. They'll open it all in one shot. It's easier that way. Then I sat, we had a booth, Highway 320 Association had a booth at the trade show, so I sat in there one night. I went to the RMA in Edmonton. And I had a good conversation with our ag minister, RJ up there. Last summer, the summer before it was. Went on a tour, Glenn Watts was there, our MP. And I used to take my, some of my cattle to Watts' meatpacking plant for butchering and it got bought and he redid it. And he spent a lot of money, where they can kill up to 35 head a week, big coolers, redid everything to meet the CIA, Canadian CFI standards, so they could sell meat to restaurants in Alberta. But now that with all this threat of tariffs and all this interprovincial trading, they are not, they can sell it to the fanciest steakhouse in Calgary. But yet they can't sell a hamburger to Wampanoah Restaurant in Swiftburn, Saskatchewan. They can't go across the border. So I had a talk with RJ about it. He said they realize that, they're doing a pilot, looking at it up in Lloyd Minister where, you know, the city is half and half and looking at it and they know it's a barrier, a trade barrier. And he said one of the issues there is we need a government that understands it in Ottawa, too. And even standing there during this tour and visiting with Glenn Watts and fellow rancher Brad Satchak was there, too. Dealing with the Canadian Food Inspection Agency is a nightmare. They control everything. And to try to get them to change will be a challenge. Even Glenn said that. It's a big challenge and it's something that we gotta keep pushing because in this day and age, it is totally ridiculous that we can sell, that that plant can sell meat to any restaurant in Alberta but can't sell anything into BC or Saskatchewan or anywhere else. It's ridiculous that we're at that stage. So hopefully it opens some eyes, hopefully we can get some traction on that, so I had a good talk with them about that. I enjoyed the convention. And that's about it.
Question for Shane?
Yeah.
So Shane, can you just go back, you'd said about the twinning, they're not opening it till, or they're hoping to have it done by '27. And they're not gonna open it up until they have the whole area. So that means obviously the next, there will be no construction at all in any of the other zones until after that is done. Is that right?
That'll be it because it's a funding issue.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to clarify what you said.
So the piece from Tabor to Verdette is not gonna be open at the end of '26?
Nope, '27.
Yeah, because we're all still '26?
No, it's gonna be '27. It's always '27.
34 kilometers or something? Okay.
It's a lot of work with utilities. And they're juggling too, like they're working all through the winter here, some of them canal crossings. You know, where they have to have it done by May 1st. And that, so they're working on them. But it's a, it's a big stretch. You know, I was in the business for a lot of years and I've never seen that long of a stretch, you know, in one shot. Usually they do 10 or 12 clicks and Ken understands that, too. That's, doing that big of a stretch, that's a big undertaking.
Okay, I think Robin has a question for you, Shane?
Yeah, no, I wanted to echo what Shane just said. I observed his conversation with RJ and it was, it was great. RJ was very receptive of it. The, as Shane was just talking, one of the thoughts that I had and wondering whether we'd be interested in doing this, but with the tariff environment right now, it's changed the way that as Canadians, we look at exports and then exporting outside of our own provinces to other provinces if we're not able to necessarily export down to the US in the same way as we used to. I spoke with Scott Pierce yesterday, who was the previous president for FCM, and he was telling me about how FCM has a policy that they just put through that is specifically focusing and advocating for resource corridors. Oil, gas, hydro, all these other things. This might be a really good time to bring something like this up as a resolution even to FCM that says, hey, like, you know, we're talking about interprovincial trade, interprovincial resource sharing. If we're, you know, in Alberta and we can't even sell our beef into Saskatchewan, Manitoba, and things like that. If, if council's interested, I could see whether or not we could still get a resolution in and, and bring that forward. We're gonna have a new government in a month. We don't know who it's gonna be right now, but the time might be right, the iron might be hot. But there'd be interest in, that, that sounds like a great thing to bring forward from here. And it's sponsored by a member municipalities. Just a thought.
Is that something that should go through RMA? No?
RMA is a member municipality that's to it. It doesn't go through RMA and then to that, so the individual member municipalities bring forward the resolutions and then it needs a, you know, three fifths majority to pass and you know, even if, even if it doesn't pass, to be able to stand up and advocate for something, it, it very well may pass because it's, again, it's, it's a shared resource in the country and we have even, I believe, both members of the parties that are leading in the polls right now have talked about lifting a lot of that interprovincial trade. If we can get FCM pushing for something like that, that's right in our back door, right in our backyard.
Lloyd?
Yeah, I totally agree with you, but isn't this Team Canada that I keep hearing on the news, all the premiers? Aren't they doing that right now? Aren't they talking about getting our trade barriers down from province to province?
Yeah, they are. There's, there's lots of people that are pushing for it in all different, different avenues right now. And the key is, is that you just keep pushing, you keep pushing with what you've got. So, you know, if they're doing it, they're advocating, that's great. If you have the ability to have municipal governments that are pushing for the same kind of thing, that's, that doesn't hurt either.
Okay. Al, do you have some thoughts on that? Hate to put you on the spot, but.
I would have to do a little bit of research into the question. I understand the, the interprovincial barrier issue. I think in some of these cases, it could be a province to province. If Saskatchewan and Alberta got together, they could probably, they could probably come up with an agreement to allow Alberta beef into Saskatchewan, Saskatchewan beef into Alberta, et cetera, et cetera, as, and other products as well. I think the bigger question is the interprovincial barriers from BC to Newfoundland. I think that's a much larger question and what is it that we could or couldn't do in Alberta that if we were to release those barriers or remove those barriers, what could potentially happen? Could oil and gas flow from Alberta to, to New Brunswick? Unfortunately, the Premier of Quebec made it clear again in the news just the other day that there will never be an Energy East Pipeline going through Quebec. And the only way to get to the east coast with a pipeline is to, at some point, you have to go through the province of Quebec. Leader of the block, could be the leader of the block, but there is a difference, but at the end of the day, it's not likely to happen because I believe that Quebec probably feels the same way, although I'm not, I haven't heard the premier say specifically, but councillor Kirk White's up to the right, that was the leader of the block who said that would never happen. And I'm not sure, I don't understand Quebec politics well enough to know what kind of influence he has in terms of provincial politics. But for now, we can't, and interprovincial barriers are a big deal. In theory, you can't take, you can't take a case of beer from here to Manitoba legally. So I do think there's an argument to be made that at the federal level, these, these barriers need to be removed. Unfortunately, the barrier removing is not really even a federal problem because it becomes down to provincial interests more than anything else. Each province wants to protect their, their industry, whatever that industry is. BC wants to protect the Okanagan wine. We want to protect oil and gas and Alberta beef. Saskatchewan wants to protect whatever Saskatchewan wants to protect. And, and, and on and on. So I think there is a role for RMA to play in terms of working with the province to work with our adjacent neighbors, Saskatchewan on the one side and BC on the other. But I do think there's probably also a bigger federal conversation. And RMA is probably not best suited for that conversation either.
Okay. Thank you.
And thank you for putting me on the spot.
Yeah, I thought of that after, but we do appreciate your words of wisdom. Shane?
Yeah, RJ did mention that he is working with Saskatchewan Department Agriculture with the minister over there, too, and they do know about it and working on it, which I was glad to hear.
Okay, so we know some people are working on it. Let's give it a month or so and see what comes up. Okay. Dustin, please.
God, I didn't do anything near that exciting. So March 11th at MPC, the 25th of March had the Seven Persons Hall AGM. They were happy that Joe was there to give them some information about a bunch of things, so thank you to him for showing up. And then March 26th, I taught or helped teach Mary Lake Colony firefighting course, so they've kind of come on board to help the county out and they have their own Class II fire engine sitting out there and they're more willing to help with us, so I spent the day training them and it was really good.
Okay, thank you. Keith?
Okay, so back at the beginning of March, did the Southfield Luncheon. And that was, that was cool. We invited the base commander and the commander of Batus, the British side to the luncheon. And all four of them expressed how much they enjoyed it. And I got a thank you letter from the base commander following up on that event, so I thought that was a, was a plus. Visited the HALO unveiling of the new helicopter. That was a pretty exciting evening. Went to RMA and enjoyed that. Had a pep meeting last Friday. And I have to say, that's probably one of the, the most enjoyable pep meetings we've had. We had a sponsored Arnold Dirksen and Deborah Koolit to go to Japan on a FoodX tour. And they reported back about their tour and just the difference in marketing from Japan and from Canada. It's kind of interesting. They said they don't buy three loaves of bread and put it in the deep freeze. They buy six slices of bread and that's all they buy at a time. And they don't buy a bunch of bananas, they buy one at a time. Sounds, sounds crazy, but it was just interesting. They, while they were there, they saw Alberta products on the different shelves in the form of honey, in the form of tallow, tallow cream. Tomatoes, tomatoes from, where's that? Camrose? Up there by Camrose was the plant, no? And they're just, all the different stuff that comes from Alberta, so they just, they're really positive about. So they just, they're really positive about going back possibly next year and having a booth over there. So featuring Alberta products. So I think there's some, there's definitely some merit to this in developing, developing that market. Seeing where it fits in southern Alberta. And yeah, that was my, my report.
Okay, thank you. I also went to the Southfield luncheon. It was quite interesting. It was good to talk to the chair to find out what they, direction they'd like to go with the hall and what updates, and different upgrades they would like to make at that hall. It was, it was pretty interesting. And Al did talk to them about the fact that we are looking at hiring somebody that will look after all the, the county properties, all the halls and help put a plan together once the assessment was done. And that would answer Seven Persons' request for new furnaces and air conditioning. And the last thing I heard about down at Irvin was they would like to redo bathrooms.
And also, and also the, the plant, they have some plant restoration.
Yeah. So there is some work ahead, but I know administration is aware of it and, and that's great. Went to Edmonton for the RMA convention. Yeah, I, I don't think we've ever come back from an RMA convention without learning something about different things. The Bear Pit session is always awesome to have the municipalities, speakers go up and, and ask questions about the MLAs. It was, it was really good. It ended pretty, pretty heated at the end, the last one. So that was, that was different. Had a Milk River Watershed meeting on the 20th. Didn't drive down there because that was the day after we just got back from Edmonton. I do have a sheet in front of me. So what I wanted to say was also we're going to add in there that I'm not going to be running again in the next election. So anybody that has questions, anybody rate peers out there that might be interested in running in Ward 7, please give me a call. Can try and answer your questions on what the job is like. It is very interesting. It's, if you are curious every day when you get up, this is an excellent job for that. And I've enjoyed it for my 12 years. So I brought the, for the Milk River Watershed, somebody's going to have to step up to the plate this fall on that. And I, I brought the agenda that we discussed down there. It's pretty interesting. And Cypress County is pretty important to that Milk River Watershed, even though we're a long ways away. It's something that I think we, we can't forget about. They need our support, both federally and provincially. And it's mostly federally. I had a non-TRC meeting in foremost. We are wrapping that up. On that evening of the 26th, I attended a Cypress County Community Foundation meeting where we did some analyzing and chose some amounts for the four groups that were chosen to receive funding. And while I'm at that, Leslie Ann, I have a request from Nikki Gray. She's the executive director of Community Foundation. She is looking for somebody that would listen in on their, I'll just read it. "The Community Foundation is conducting a survey and collecting real-time data to showcase the dire needs that our charitable organizations are facing in southeast Alberta. The Medicine and District Executive Director Network will be hosting a community conversation to discuss the survey results and data on April 15th from 11:45 to 1:15 and request your participation." I sent her an email and said, "We can't do it," but do we have somebody that could fill in? Okay. And you'll let Nikki know then? And I'll just pass that on. Yes, but you two will look after it. Okay. Sounds like it's important enough that we should, should be there. I'm registered for local to global. It's Eastern Alberta Trade Corridor Forum that's happening here in Medicineat, April 23rd to 25th. And I understand Al has given Beth permission to go to this also. So we'll be coming back with a report. It's three days or two and a half days of, how can I say it? It's just discussing trade routes, discussion, how we can all work together. Attended the, on the March 27th in the evening, I attended HALO's AGM. Dan was there and also Lloyd. And when their executive director was giving their report, he must have repeated it four or five times at least that they would not be where they are without the support and leadership of Cypress County. And I think that people should know that because he was very, he just, he said it many, many times. If we hadn't stepped up when they, the light was turned, going out on that, on that whole thing of HALO, they wouldn't have made it. And there was a lady there that within that two weeks, like with our participation, it didn't, didn't die. And trying to find better words, but she actually was in a serious accident. And without HALO being around to pick her up, and I think it was in the Hill to Schuler area, she wouldn't have survived. So I think it'd make everybody feel pretty good that we stepped up to the plate on this one. And yeah, Keith and I attended a pep meeting in Redcoof. What happened last year was Barb Kulik and I think it was, who's the fellow from Oi and? Doug Jones went and they participated in this through the Alberta government. Got some great results. Then went back again this year. And Arnold Dirksen is the Reeve of Newell County. And, and being a beef producer, he was really interested in what was going on and did a great job of selling Alberta beef over there. So I'm going to suggest if someday Barb can make it work, that she would come and give us a little bit of a story of what all they did over in Japan. It was, it was really interesting. As Keith said, there's a market there and definitely it'll be something that should be pursued. It's a little different culture over there. Like you said, here we have big fridges and deep freezes and we'll buy numerous amounts of bread where they would buy six at a time. And if they did buy a loaf, they would make sure they split it with their families. Every cucumber has to be individually wrapped. Bananas are individually wrapped. It's just, it's a different culture. They're very, very concerned about food safety and we just feel we can meet those requirements. So there's a market that will definitely be pursued more. But Keith and I both agree, we need to get Barb here to give us a little more of a heads up. This summer, I, I attended a Community Futures Entrecore meeting. And we're going to have a drone competition here on, kind of unorganized, sorry. It'll be this summer and it's, it's a competition that is normally held in Quebec. This is the first time it's come to western Canada. Our people over at Community Futures Entrecore have gotten, there's an economic development program over there. Tracy Stroud leads that. And they've worked hard because drones are something that are up and coming. And they really feel there's going to be a huge market for drones and also for the people that build them, maintain them and do applications for them. So there'll be that, that's coming this summer and it'll be, they're working through the Medicineat College with that. I had an agenda here and now I can't find it, but it's, oh yeah, it's going to be in May, May 8th and 9th, 10th. There's going to be about 19 teams that are going to show up. And it's kind of a good boost to the economy here, Medicineat. And yeah, there's exciting things going on up there. There's quite a list of stuff that's happening economic development wise. I just, I guess can't report on everything, so. Yeah, well, it was a little longer than the last council meeting, but is there any questions? No? Okay. Do we want to, I need a motion to accept the council reports as presented. Robin's doing that. Vote. Okay, that's carried. And now we need a motion to go on camera because Al's going to give us an update on what's been happening. And I will take this opportunity to thank Shane for bringing the lunch. Got to vote? Okay, we're in camera. We'll take. We'll take...